Good afternoon. Welcome to APA's Town Hall. My name is Billy Zadig, Standards and Codes Administrator for APA. Just a couple of housekeeping items before we get started. This Town Hall will be recorded and posted to the APA webpage later this afternoon. You'll receive a follow-up email in the next couple of days with a link to the webpage where all recordings are housed. All attendees are in listen-only mode. Please type your questions in the chat box and they will be answered in the order they are received. If we run out of time and we still have questions, responses will be sent directly to the person asking the question by one of our panelists. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce our speakers or our panelists for today. I have Mary Beth Coza, Treasurer, Division of Chemical Health and Safety of ACS, Chair -elect, North Carolina ACS Local Section, and she is from the University of North Carolina, Chapel Hill, retired. I have Sammy Sigmund, Immediate Past Chair, ACS Division of Chemical Health and Safety, Director of Stockroom Operations Chemistry Appalachian State University, and Marcus Chafell, Standards Compliance and Emergency Planning Research Safety Northwestern University as your panelists today. First of all, we want to tell everybody, the reason we're doing the Town Hall is we were approached by ICA, ICEA, to be part of their consensus program, and we're very happy to do as much. And we're here today to just give you a little bit of background on what this has been, what has happened in the past, where we are now, and we're asking, I'm asking the APA members who are attending this webinar to give us feedback on where you want us to go and how you want us to vote for the consensus on of this. And Mary Beth, and Sammy, and Marcus will go back to their groups and basically ask the same questions. Should we approve the reaffirmation, or should we disapprove it and ask for a revision? Back in 2016, all of our organizations, we did a nine-question survey to our members, and basically we presented the information that we received on that. Now, I'm going to turn this over to the panelists to begin talking. Thank you.
Okay. This is Mary Beth Coza. So, when we went to discuss this, some of the things we discussed was testing, and what was the difference between the definitions of testing, certification, and activation? Because in the current standard, as written, that is not clearly defined. We were told that the certification is a word only used by manufacturers to ensure their product meets this, their product meets the standard. The next topic we discussed was sustainability and zero waste and the environmental impact. So, eye washes and safety showers, based on this proposal, are requested to be tested weekly, inspected annually, and that, if you think about how much water is needed for these units, can become a question of sustainability or zero waste, because I know the University of North Carolina was looking to have a zero-waste policy. Next slide, please. Inspections, and I touched a little bit about that, but one thing that the three of us really requested was that there should be best options for clarification and provide options for best practices, so that it could be a performance-based standard based on your location. When you have a university that has over 1,000 eye washes and maybe 300 safety showers, if you're doing weekly testing, that is a phenomenal amount of man-hour to be spent on this, especially if you're part of a public water system, that there isn't a concern about water quality. And the next point about this is that regulatory bodies actually look to ANSI for compliance, and what will happen is, is that if you do not meet what's required in the standard, you will be audited against that, and they request documentation. So, that becomes an issue if there's a weekly testing requirement for eye washes as well as safety showers. Next slide.
Okay.
And I'm going to hand it over to Sammy.
All right. Thanks, Mary Beth. This is Sammy Sigmund from Appalachian State. So, from the Division of Chemical Health and Safety, we had some concerns about aligning this standard with the ADA standards, and a couple of our members went through their documents with the ADA documents and then compared them to the Z358 document, and they actually gave them numerous locations where the wording could be more supportive of the ADA regulations. And much of this had to do with the root, access routes, and the locations of the showers and eye washes, and how the valve operations were activated. And so, we gave that document that was marked up to align the two standards to the members of the meeting when we were there. So, an example of this, they suggested that as part of the maintenance, possibly eye washes and showers, the language couldn't include something that ensured furnishings, equipment, and other items did not encroach on the accessible route to the emergency shower and therefore block any wheel travel to the units. And then, the valve attenuators, that had something to do with the height, to match the height up and the, from the floor and from the ceiling on matching the ADA regulations. So, there's plenty of places that they could be better aligned. Next slide, please. So, also, we talked about hand-warm water, and in the ANSI current standard, tepid is defined as a flushing fluid temperature conducive to promoting a minimum of 15-minute irrigation period. A suitable range is 16 to 38C, 60 to 100F. And so, what we were talking about was, you know, without regular testing, you have a higher possibility of growing your Legionella and other pathogens. But of more concern to me now is this term tepid, because I just went through a renovation, and when we explained to the plumbers, they didn't pull the ANSI reg, they pulled the plumbing regs or got it online. To a plumber, tepid means 104 degrees. And so, this term tepid is misleading and ambiguous, and it could mean that we have some eye washes that are at 104 degrees if it doesn't get caught by whoever's working on the, with the team, with the plumbers. So, I was very concerned about that high temperature and the terminology tepid, I think needs to be reevaluated. Also, we had extensive discussion on drainage. There's always this argument, and our list serve, Division of Chemical Health and Safety is full of these discussions, about, well, you can't drain showers because of the amount of whatever's coming off the person. And there is standard guidance, it's in total federal regulations 261, it's EPA 40, and I could, that's enough of that. But it says that de minimis losses are inadvertent releases to a wastewater treatment system, including those from discharges from safety showers and rinsing and cleaning of personal safety equipment. And so, the EPA considers it de minimis, so it's not disallowed. So, new construction, we're not advocating for retro, we're adding for a new construction, this would be very helpful to universities, because they will try to nix drainage based on cost. And so, if we had this in the standard, we could advocate for putting those drains in. That prevents flooding the floors below you if you have to activate the showers, and it also, then, you would be growing mold in the plenum, florum, plenum, between the two floors. So, we would love to see something in the, in the standard about drains. And I think the next slide is Marcus.
Yeah, thank you, Sammy, and thanks for being able to organize this. I think this is an important topic that a number of us deal with. I just wanted to get a little bit, a higher look at this. I have three kind of topics that I want to address, the data gap, and that we have done as part of HIMA, too. HIMA is an organization of campus safety, health, and environmental managers. So, the data gathering, what I perceive as some of the consensus that we have, and then the topic that I would call does one size fits all industries. So, in terms of data gathering, what we had communicated to ICA in December of 2016, when we all met in Washington, was that we had done a HIMA survey, that we got 47 responses to that. It was geared towards the safety shower testing aspect, because that seemed to be the most contentious issue. And most people, they came back with that survey, basically said that, for one thing, they are not doing what is prescribed in the standard, and that the standard, therefore, is somewhat sufficient in that, in that aspect. We also did, more locally, a Northwestern survey of all of our, you know, water flushing devices. So, there's, you know, for Northwestern, there's 1,200 eye washes, about 600 eye face washes, and 700, almost 800 safety showers. So, extrapolating that to the, to the research, to college universities, and maybe some hospitals, community that we're really talking to, or representing, that's a very sizable number of devices. The other aspect of data gathering was that I looked at the Northwestern Incident Survey, and the somewhat surprising result was that in almost all emergency situations, where water flushing was advised, the affected person and their helpers went to the sink for first relief. So, in terms of water flushing outcome, the sink is a very critical component of, you know, the overall picture. So, I want to talk a little bit about consensus itself, on a very broad level, which safety devices in the first aid category should make a measurable impact on outcomes. Secondly, emergency flushing of the eyes or body of a person who has been exposed to have this material makes a measurable impact. So, I think there's no question that, you know, water flushing devices are necessary. The standard, so, should address these water flushing safety device performance, and right now, the standard fully recognizes three types, three devices, so the eye washes at .4 gallons per minute, the eye face washes at 3 gallons per minute, and the safety showers at 20 gallons per minute. There's some supplementary devices also mentioned in the standard, but, you know, what it basically recognizes as, fully recognizes are the eye wash, eye face wash, and safety showers. And there may be consensus that depending on what part of the body is affected by this hazardous material, you have different water flow advice. I think the last part is that the water used for flushing needs has to be of portable quality. The water that sits in a pipe too long, they become non-portable. So, the third category is this, does one size fits all, this aspect. Safety showers are really industrial device. They put out 20 gallons per minute, so you have, 20 gallons per minute is roughly 10x more water than a regular shower put, sorry, I think, you know, you would have taken this morning. How these devices became the default for a relatively modest water flushing needs in colleges, universities, and hospitals, is worth wild discussion. The standard, secondly, the standard describes installation locations, distance, and testing frequency, as if this standardization provides essential benefits. There are newer plumbing designs, it avoids stacking water rates, water quality and type design varies widely, and so, some of these prescriptions that are right now in the standard may be better suited for, for product manuals. Thirdly, an ANSI seal implies wide consensus. Having this standard live on as an International Safety Equipment Association guideline would lift some of the implied compliance language strangleholds. Colleges, universities, and hospitals would give some leeway to install and use these devices where they generate the most benefit for their, for their industry. Right now, nobody wants to go on record in taking out a safety shower, taking a safety shower out of service because of these kind of implied compliance issues. And I think the fourth aspect should also be addressed, or at least considered, when the, when the standard language goes beyond product performance constitution, there is some concept of interest, having that equipment measures actually dictate the ANSI consensus process. And so, that, you know, we went, Sammy, Billy, and Mary Beth went to ICA in December of 2016. It brought up a lot of these issues to ICA, and now we're in the process where ICA has proposed no changes to the standard, and basically, is proposing to ANSI reaffirmation without, without any changes to the current standard. So, that's kind of the situation that we're in right now. And I think we'll turn it over to Billy.
Thank you. So, what we're going, what we're actually want to do now is to have our, just to give you some more information, background. Since the December 2nd, 2016 meeting, there has been no action on revising the standard. ICA announced through ANSI standard action that they were withdrawing the PINS, which is a project initiation notice system, that they were withdrawing the revision. And then, through communications that we received, they are now taking action to reaffirm the standard as it currently stands. And basically, the definition of a reaffirmation is no substantive changes made to the current document, and anything that we're requesting would be considered a substantive change. ANSI's definition says that a substantive change in a proposed American national standard is likely or materially affects the use of the standard. And examples of the changes below are additions, deletions, revisions of requirements regardless of the number of changes, addition to mandatory compliance with reference standards, and changing from shall to should, and should to shall. And of course, a revision is defined as make changes to it in order to improve it, make it more modern, or make it more suitable for particular purpose. So, if, we're asking if you have any questions for our panelists right now? Please type them in, and if we don't get any questions, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna, while questions come in, I'm, all right? Bear with me, I'm doing double duty here. Okay, we have something. According to the outdated research I reviewed, that it, that is cited in the establishing of a frequency of flushing currently required came about by the sampling of water in only a handful of systems. This standard was set to address the worst-performing system, even though one system showed no contamination at all in the water, and investigating what it was about the one that did not show biological growth. And I'm not sure what the question is in this, but here again, the study that this standard is based on was done in 1981, which means it's soon to be almost 40 years old. So, what we are asking for the members, or the people who are here on this call today, what we would like you to do is, we're asked you to send me an email to me at billy@apa.org to confirm your desire for APA to agree with the reaffirmation, or to disagree and request ICA begin revising the standard. APA staff will create a comment for submission to ICA, ICEA, and ANSI with all submitters affiliations. The members of the panel will be going back to their organizing, organizations and asking their members to do the same thing. So, what?
Yeah, but Billy?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Billy, can I just, can I just address the question? I think this is the basic, the basic question about standards is, do you prescribe something like a frequency, you know, weekly flushing? Or do you prescribe a performance-based standard, so you basically say, you know, the water shall be of portable quality, and that then puts the, puts back on the owner to, to, I mean, it gives, it gives some freedom to how, how frequently it needs to be done. And depending on the piping design and the water quality, you know, that can be all locally adjusted. So, is it really a benefit to have the standard kind of dictate these frequencies on a worst-case scenario? Yeah?
Okay, we have another question. If the standard is not revised, how long before new changes can be proposed again? Well, right now, the standard was published in 2014. So, in 2019 is when they would have, I think I've got my dates correct, they would, 2019, you have to do a five-year review, and that's to reaffirm, revise, or withdraw. So, now, the standard will be 10 years old, and after that, you, ANSI needs, well, if you don't have some kind of action on it, ANSI will withdraw the approve, its approval as an American national standard. So, what needs to be done is, we need to tell ICEA that, as an industry, and one of the biggest clients that the manufacturers have, is to tell them, this cannot be reaffirmed as is, it must be revised. So, we'll go on to our next.
Sure. Okay, and Billy's totally right, and that was why in 2000, when the standard was finalized in 2014, and there was a lot of concern at the university level, just based on some of the new testing requirements and the certification and the weekly testing. That's why in 2016, there was a lot of interest in getting revisions made, so it could be more performance-based. So, leaving it as it is creates regulatory headaches for organizations that have certifications that go back and say, what, show us your documentation of your testing to meet the standard.
Yeah, and had someone make the comment, these standards definitely need revision. We are wearing this, the units out by doing weekly testing. The O-rings are falling apart, and by keeping the eye wash always wet, there is bacteria growing in the units. And then, we have another comment. If the standard is not revised, how, okay, we've gotten that one done. Sorry, I am doing double duty here. Should the testing be weekly or monthly? What is the panel's recommendation?
I'll take that one. My stance is that you need to look at where you're located, what is your individual situation, and what type of units you have, and do you have floor drains or you don't. So, weekly testing is a, works when you're attached to a drain and you're, so it's close to a sink, and there's a lot of activity within the area. Otherwise, it becomes a maintenance nightmare. So...
Go ahead and finish, Mary Beth.
That's good.
And then, I would like to add something. Are you done, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just was going to give an example. We are a small institution, and so, we don't have the hunt, we have maybe 50 eye wash and maybe 30 shower eye wash units, but our problem, more than bacteria, is rust. If we don't check them weekly, so that's what Mary Beth said, it depends on your piping as well, and so, we're always flushing the rust out. And also, keep in mind that bump testing, what they call bump testing, is for function, to make sure they're working. It's not flow testing, to make sure they're putting out however many gallons they're required to put out. And bump testing doesn't require you run them all that long, it just, you want to check to make sure it's clean, and you want to check to make sure that it's functioning. So, bump tests are a little less onerous.
Yeah, if I can just add, so we, I talked about the three different devices, eye wash, eye face wash, and the safety shower. If the devices are connected to a sink, and obviously, that can only be for the eye wash and eye face wash, it's very easy to let the user do the testing. It's more complicated when device is a safety shower, or the device does not have a floor drain.
Right.
And then, you are, you're, you almost have to get a third party to do the testing, and that's the part where it gets very difficult. And then, it leads, as I said, I think it leads to the more basic question of, especially for the safety showers, if, if a sink-mounted device wouldn't be actually providing the benefit or a similar benefit.
Marcus, people are having trouble hearing you. Could you back off your mic just a little bit? And see if that helps?
Back off?
Yeah.
Back off?
Yeah, back up from your mic.
Oh, okay. Is it set up?
Yes, I think you're a little clearer. Okay. Another comment that someone made was, currently ANSI does not require floor drains for emergency showers. At UT Austin, we are required by EH and S to have floor drains for new emergency showers. What, what are university peers doing now?
As I, I'll take that, Billy, this Sammy.
Okay, thank you.
We advocated for it in our lab, we just finished this past summer doing some renovations, and there's, absolutely, there's no reason to put a floor drain in it when you're doing new construction. I don't necessarily, like I said, I wouldn't advocate for retrofitting, that's beyond the scope of my existence, but I would definitely, for any new construction, say there's absolutely no reason not to put those in. If you're putting the floor, if you're putting the shower eye wash units in, give them a sloped drain. And if you have trouble with gases coming back up out of the drains, because they get dry, or they're on a bad leg, then just, you know, make it a routine when you're testing, if you're testing, to put some water down the drain. to put some water down the drain and, and flush it out. But yes, I would definitely agree that you need to be putting floor drains in new construction. But that's my-
If you don't put in floor drains, you will not get the testing done as needed or at the right level that's needed. And the other thing is, is people will be afraid to use the, afraid to use the unit in an emergency. I have heard that many times from folks that say, "Well, I can't use that safety shower. There's no floor drain, and I don't wanna flood the whole building."
Yep, yep. So, um, again, there's, in my mind, there's absolutely no reason not to put drains in for, and slope floors for, for new construction. And that should be in the standard. 'Cause it helps, it helps us, because the universities will still argue with you that it's too cost prohibitive. And so, if it was in the standard, we could, we could say, "Look, this is, um, you know, something that, that the ISCA and ANSI are advocating for."
Yeah, there's another good question just came through is, "At what point will an organization be fined by OSHA?" From my understanding, it's only, it's only monthly testing.
I don't think OSHA will ever, this is Sammy again, I'm sorry, I kinda just started talking. I don't think OSHA will ever fine, and where they would go is, I guess, the general duty clause to say that the, if it didn't function, that you didn't protect your workers. So, there's no specific, right?
No, no, I think there is a standard in OSHA on it that refers back to the ANSI standard for eye washers.
For, for, uh, the testing time periods? I didn't know, okay.
Right, so if it refers back, and, and that's not, I mean, I don't think the issue of finding is the question. It's the question, the issue is having something in a standard that folks know is extremely difficult to meet, and, and not having the ability to at least develop for the organization a performance-based standard. And right now, as written, there is no, that ability is not there. And it is critical for certifications. So if you're a healthcare organization and you're, and you're, that's JCO, that would be, they could write you up for that. And I have had my variant, um, my variant certification request the documentation for all eye wash and safety shower inspections.
What about BSL-2 and, uh...
BSL-2, the BIMBO, does recommend safety shower and eye washes for, um, BSL-2, BSL-3, and BSL-4. See, eye washes, I think, for BSL-1. But we have, we did go back for BSL-2 labs and put in, um, safety showers.
Okay, I have a question here that says, "If ICA agrees to revise the standard, what are the next steps?" Do you want me to take this one?
Please.
Okay, so what we, if they decide to revise the standard, then, uh, we hope that they will take all of the documentation that we sent, or that we provided to them in 2016, along with possibly doing new research on the, um, or updating the research that was done in twenty, in 1981, uh, and sort of redo that, and then start looking at what the users of this standard are, is basically requesting. So, it would be, they would revise the standard. It would go out in ANSI's public review, um, at which time I can put it out to the APA membership for, for everybody to take a look at. We actually have a group, uh, here at APA, our APA Standards and Codes Council, who would review this and make recommendations. And we would move forward from there. But it's basically, like I said, the reason for this town hall was to get the feeling of the attendees to be, as APA being part of the consensus body, as each of the panelists have been asked to be, we're asking you what you, what your consensus is. Should this be reaffirmed, or should we disagree with the reaffirmation and go ahead and do, ask them to please do the revision? And these comments would also be sent to ANSI, you know, so they, they know that, that there's an industry that's objecting to this being just reaffirmed again. And I had someone say, "I have over five hundred eye wash safety shower units on campus, and these current testing standards are main, are maintenance nightmares with my 1984 staffing levels." And I think someone asked a question about contaminated. Someone was asking, "What happens when there are tox, when you have a shower and it has a drain, what happens to the toxins?"
Um, this is Sammy, are you, are we asking about the runoff?
The runoff, yes.
Um, well, again, as I said, EPA considers it de minimis, and I'm assuming unless it's something horribly toxic, like a cyanide or something, that, you know, a regular acid or base flush is not going to trigger any violations of anything. 'Cause the EPA just considers it de minimis.
Okay. All right, well, I'm just checking to see if we have any other questions that would... Okay, we have a question that says, "What do the panelists think? Is this will be a one-time cost and may be able to change the weekly test to every other week or monthly to save labor costs?"
This is Marcus again. You cannot, um, for the economic part of this, you know, it has to be played out in a diff, in a different way. Um, I think everybody is in consensus that if the water is not potable, it's not drinkable, um, it's not, it's not of the quality that you wanna come out of these devices for emergency, like first aid water flushing. Um, and so that, the standard should be written to that, uh, outcome, that you basically wanna have potable, potable water. Um, it cannot be written to, um, you know, and it depends on, you know, in, in some, some areas, you know, monthly probably fine. I mean, um, in our FEMA survey, uh, it came out that most facilities actually just do it annually. Uh, and that just take, take the risk of, you know, having to walk and walk up a foot.
So, I will say, right, I will jump into is, is that on the safety showers, um, especially in mechanical rooms and that, the annual verification testing has been, um, has been fine, and I never saw an issue with that. Um, for over thirty years, I never saw an issue with that. To go to monthly testing, and right now, the standard calls for weekly testing. Um, but even to go for safety showers to monthly testing, that should really be based on a water quality or piping concern of the location. It should not be incorporated into the standard as the best practice.
Someone asked, "Does the, anyone on the panel know how they address this issue in Europe?"
I do not.
It's a good question. Uh, this is Marcus again. So in Europe, there is a European standard, and it actually is specifically for laboratories. Uh, it excludes the industrial applications. So in the US, we basically have the same standard for a chemistry plant, or some other, you know, heavy industry, uh, that applies to the, the devices that we have in, in college classrooms and so forth. And, and that's the part that I'm questioning, that we just, we have an industrial-sized device, especially in safety showers, that, that is in our, uh, uh, in our spaces. The, the Europeans have actually typically approached of having different water flows for them, for them with more modest needs than the, you know, the needs that you could have in industry, where, you know, the whole body might be covered in acid, and you wanna definitely flush this with massive amounts of water. So, and the standard very much is, uh, looking to the worst-case scenario and not to the, uh, you know, the expected scenario that you would have in a college or university.
Okay, I'm getting some statements-
And, 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 it's just, just to face this up, I mean, I think, you know, ICA is International Safety Treatment Association. That the international part is taken seriously. They should make efforts to harmonize this internationally and harmonize the, the American standard with the European standard, that the European standard has some benefits to, um, and it, and it's, it's more lenient. Uh, it does not, it's not as prescriptive, um, so that the owner, you know, can decide what they, you know, how often they wanna test it and so forth.
Okay, we have some comments coming in. And someone said, uh, "The 1981 research showed a system with no degradation." So, it would need, you know, like I said, it's almost a forty-year-old study. And so, we have another comment that said, "Local sewer plants do not want to accept water flow that they will find, I guess, from the showers, you know, where there's runoff."
Yeah, and then, I mean, just, just the aspect of the drains, that drains are sanitary drains in most cases. Sanitary drains go to the, to the local water treatment plant. And it's really the water treatment plant, um, that sets the regulation of what, what kind of things can go down the drain. I mean, I do agree with Sammy that in most perceivable cases, this will be the minimum amounts that will flush down the drain, and, uh, it should not be of concern.
That is absolutely correct. But your local, uh, water sewer, uh, treatment plant could mix it if they wanted to.
Okay, and someone asked the question, "Would it be possible that the ANSI ICA to give not only mandatory requirements, but also to add best practice recommendations, such as piping quality for eye wash and emergency shower?" Anything's possible, you know, anything's possible. We can all, you can always ask for those types of things when, you know, during a revision, and it would, you know, it's up to ICA to say yes or no, and then we have the right to agree or disagree, and we can continue to disagree with what's done. Someone else asked the question, "Does anyone have insight about how grant-funded research could be impacted due to non-compliance with a standard such as this? Such as NIH, DOD, et cetera?"
Okay, so if you have NIH, NIH has design guidelines. So if you, if your facility meets those design guidelines, that should not be an issue of your grant from the granting agent. And the DOD facility required safety plans, they actually, um, that requirement has been, um, eliminated. So I don't think that's an issue there.
Okay, well, that's basically the end of the questions that I have or the comments that people have put in. I've been getting emails from people, you know, voicing their opinion. I will share these with the panelists. And I, and once they do their own call to their members to see what they, what they think, we'll share this information with each other and will then provide the information to ICA when they ask us for our opinion. So if we have nothing else to talk about here today... Oh, someone else just put a couple of other items in. "What about designing washwater?" Sorry, my screen keeps jumping on me. "What, what about designing washwater in a loop that could flush the pipelines without actually flowing the heads?"
Yeah, that's exactly what I talked about, uh, as the more modern plumbing design. Uh, you can design, um, safety showers and all the other devices too where you have circulating water. And that then provides potable water all the time, so you don't have this issue of stagnant water. And that's why this prescription of, you know, requiring weekly, um, is kind of a worst-case scenario prescription, but it does not, uh, account for the best cases. The best cases are the installations where you have circulating water all the time that is not, not getting degraded.
Okay, another question, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just to clarify on Marcus's, um, statement, because we had some discussion about this. That water is circulated but then goes to another use. It's not looping continuously in a dead loop. It gets used, and then fresh water comes into the loop. Is that correct, Marcus?
That's right.
Okay.
And someone else made the comment, "Consider a tepid water loop for a building. The loop is returned to the mechanical room. A BMS can open a solenade valve to flush the loop weekly for fifteen minutes."
Yes, and that's a great solution, which isn't allowed right now.
Right, and that's, that's what we're saying is that, that, and Marcus is advocating for is that the way it's currently written is not, um, is not allowing people to think outside the box, right, on how these could be better.
Right, and I mean, the other aspect is the mixing valve. Um, I mean, right now, most of the devices have, have their own mixing valve. So you, you have to bring hot and cold water to the device. You have this mixing valve, temperature mixing valve, that's very tricky to maintain.
Yep.
Um, and then, uh, so if you have the whole, all the devices on its own loop, if you basically, uh, you provide maybe eighty-degree water to it, um, you don't have to have mixing valves all over. But that's a whole, that's a whole, uh, you know, different building design than what we currently work with.
And I, I have great concerns about these mixing valves failing and somebody going to use the eye wash, and it's, you know, scalding water.
Okay, I have, another question has, "So if they allow self-testing, who is documenting the test?"
That's, that's part of the, um, that's part of the documentation issue. And we don't know who is doing that. Each, you know, I have seen certain labs, I've seen a lab, when, when you have a, a group of the same researchers work on a whole floor, that they may keep a notebook of their eye wash tests, weekly tests, or, or they each have individual units. You have to allow for diversity in how you do it.
That, I totally agree with that, and that does not have to be, how you document your testing, or if you, if you document at all, does not have to be written into the standard. That is something that the owner can decide. And, I mean, we, we don't generate data, aside from the annual inspection, we don't generate data, or we require a generation of data. But then, the university's not inspected by joint commission, and joint commission or the IA group, they may, may request more, more data. They want, they want the, want to see the weekly testing, but that's, doesn't necessarily have to be written in the standard, you know, how, how to document.
That could be in the best practices section.
Hey, we have about nine minutes, and we have someone who's asking where they can see the comments that were submitted to ICEA. What we'll do is, I'll, I have all of the papers that were submitted, so I'll put that together, and I'll get it out to all the attendees today. So, look for an email from me over the weekend.
Billy, do you have the edited version for the ADA information?
I don't think I do.
Would you like that as well?
Yeah. And what I'll do is, I may just go ahead and build a webpage and have all of this documentation on the webpage that people can download. I'll see which works out best, and I'll send everybody an, an email out. So, other than that, I think we've gotten through all of our test, our questions, and if we have nothing else, I'd like to just basically thank everyone who took the time to attend this town hall today. And I'd like to thank our panelists for taking time out of their busy schedules to do this town hall on such short notice. So, yeah, again, if you would please just send an email to me with your thoughts on whether we should ask ICEA to withdraw their reaffirmation, and to really think about doing a revision, you know, coming from one of their largest consumers of products, just send me an email, and I'll put that all together, and we'll keep everyone apprised of what's happening.
Do we have a timeline? Do we have a ti, do we want to have a timeline for people, Billy? And that's your decision, but I was just wondering.
Yeah, unfortunately, one of the ANSI's, you don't have to file a PENS for a reaffirmation, so I won't know when the reaffirmation comes out until it's listed in the ANSI standards action.
Well, no, I was thinking about when you want people to get the information to you.
Oh, get the, give me their comments back.
Yes.
I would say, let's shoot for two weeks, so say like Friday, the 27th.
And I thank you for pulling this together, Billy, this is great.
Thank you, Billy.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great weekend, and please stay safe and healthy. Bye-bye now.
You as well. Okay, bye-bye.
Wash your hands.
God.